Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Fishkill Planning Board for, what are we, October, what day is it? October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. I'll have the Secretary take his attendance to an established forum.
Teresa Cattellows and for the Chairman, Vice Chair.
Yeah.
Ezra Holly.
Here.
Tricia Rice.
Here.
Joe Testa. Esther Jackson.
Here.
And other, others present are B. Buckley Building Inspector, Larry Pazey Village Engineer, Sarah Brown Village Planner.
Oh, Victoria, excuse me.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Victoria.
Victoria Paladere, Village Attorney.
We have a quorum. I'll accept the motion to accept the minutes for the, from the September nineteenth meeting.
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Couple of housekeeping. Esther has been promoted, I guess, to a full, she's not an alternate anymore. She's a full member of the board. Congratulations. But Joe, it's still an alternate, and we have an opening for one more alternate.
All right.
Okay, good. This is the most people we've had in a while. Good. The first thing on the agenda is a sign approval for Fishkill Prime, ten eighty-three Route nine. No.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Debbie Majakamo from Quick Signs. We got this approved a month or so ago, and they changed their name.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
So it's a new rest either.
Well, everything's the same except the name and the design on the front of it.
Yeah.
That's the, the address line, I'm sorry, just correcting the, the agenda, the address. That's the sign address. This is for, what's the address over there?
Eleven oh, is it eleven oh eight Main Street?
Okay. Your name, state your name for the record, please.
Debbie Majakamo, Quick Signs.
You already did that, I'm sorry. Okay.
So everything's the same size, and it's just the name and the
They changed their name again?
Logo, yeah. After I did the sign, they changed it.
Do you have samples?
I do.
Dave, is everything in compliance?
That sign is fine. It's really just a reface of the existing.
Okay.
It's a poor sign that was up there originally.
Here we go.
We cleaned up the frame of some too, because it was hurting, so it's.
And everything's all in, in the insurance and everything's all put in, Danny?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, everything's all done?
The original permit, so we're good.
Any question?
No.
Trish?
No.
Esther? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, welcome to Village of Fishkill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Second thing on the agenda is another sign approval for Canoon in, at seven thirty-eight Route nine. Not anybody?
You can only leave them to the water and hold.
Okay, all right, well, we'll move on. Okay, next is the continuation of a public hearing for Go Health Urgent Care. Hello.
Good evening.
Want to state your name for the record, please?
I am Kelly Leibert with KARC Planning Consultants.
Hi, how are you? All right. Who goes first?
Larry can go first.
Okay.
All of our comments from our previous memo were addressed.
Great.
So we have, I think, just a couple of nuts and bolts items. Being here. Yeah, the relative to the, the backflow prevention, since it's going to require a an RPZ, there's certain clearances and different things that have to be maintained, and that just, that has to be demonstrated. But again, that, that could be very easily made a condition of approval. And that's it. That's pretty much it.
All right. Want a detail on the site plan?
That would be great. That's what we usually ask for, a little detail on the site plan, yeah.
Of course, yeah, we'll add that.
Yeah. It's usually a standard detail that the guys have.
Is there any comment from the public? So once, might going twice? Okay, I will move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
No, but she has the second.
Okay, well, all right. I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So.
I will. I was looking at a date, I apologize.
Every once in a while, the planner makes an error, and I just realized it.
All of, since all of the comments had been addressed, I did prepare a draft resolution, and then Larry had outstanding comments that were fine to be conditions of approval. So I did prepare a draft resolution for your consideration tonight. On the first page, the fourth whereas paragraph says, whereas on October seventeenth, there was a public hearing held. It should say September nineteenth and October seventeenth. That is the error.
Okay, so you're just gonna revise that?
Yeah, I'll revise it. If the board adopts it, I'll send you a revised version. So whereas the Village of Fishkill Planning Board has received application for site plan and special permit approval for Go Health Urgent Care located at seven oh one, seven oh three Route nine in the Village of Fishkill, whereas the proposed action is a type-two action that requires no further processing under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas on September nineteenth and October seventeen, twenty twenty-four, the planning board held a public hearing. Whereas the application was referred to Dutchess County Planning, and Dutchess County Planning sent their comments on October ninth, twenty twenty-four, and recommended that the board rely upon its own study of the facts to make a decision. Whereas the planning board is familiar with the site and its vicinity. Whereas a parking analysis of the existing parking was prepared by the applicant to demonstrate that there is adequate parking available at anticipated peak times. And I'll just add, I know all of you reviewed the materials, but the parking analysis was provided, and also the two spaces that this use is replacing, the previous uses required thirteen parking spaces, and these require nine parking spaces. So it's actually a reduction in required parking from what was previously there. Whereas the planning board has reviewed and given due consideration to the application materials and comments raised by the public and the Village of Planning and Engineering Consultants. Whereas in granting a special permit for an urgent care facility used in the VCD Village Center Business District, the planning board has determined the following: the location and size of use, the nature and intensity of operations and traffic involved or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district. The location, nature, and height of buildings are all in harmony, sorry, I lost my place. And the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that it will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development. This is an existing building, so there wasn't really any of that involved. Operations in connection with any special use permit will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibrations. Parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located and suitably screened from adjoining residential, residential uses. Again, that was all determined during the original site plan approval. Existing municipal facilities are adequate for the proposed use, and the property will be suitably landscaped to protect neighborhood and adjacent property. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grant special permit and site plan approval to the project, subject to the following conditions. And prior to the chairman's signature, a signature block shall be provided on the site plan sheet. Compliance with the comments in the Village of Fishkill Consulting Engineers Memorandum dated October seventeenth. And then in accordance with the code section, all payments to consultants shall be made. And then the other two general, or sorry, three general conditions are our standard conditions that go in about expiration and inspections of the site.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
I will accept the motion as amended, as amended for the resolution for the Go Health Urgent Care.
I move to accept with the amendments pending.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, have a good evening.
Okay. Next on the agenda is hot stuff coffee for a public hearings. This one I have to open, right? We didn't open it one. How many public hearings we have?
No.
Yeah, state your name for the record.
I'm Amy Eddy, and this is my business partner, Stephanie McCall. Hi.
I will accept the motion to open the public hearing.
Fair enough.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yep. So wait, hold on. So do we have any comments? Larry?
We have, again, a very similar comment to the prior application. This one's a little bit less complicated. There's, it's not considered a hazardous, potentially hazardous use, so the backflow is a simple, a little check valve. But there's just some application forms and things that need to be filled out and sent in, so again, this could very easily just be covered as a condition.
And we did get a report back from the, I mean, the Dutchess County. Is that this one?
Correct, yes. So Dutchess County Planning did say that you have to rely upon your own study of the facts, but they did have two minor comments. So it, we don't need a super majority to approve it. It's just you can take it into consideration. One comment was about just confirming with the Department, Department of Health that they don't need any permits. I think that's kind of related to what you also said, which is covered by Larry's memo and his conditions. And then the other was about refuse, but I think we discussed it at the last meeting. You're not having a kitchen or
Nope.
Right, so just as a matter of course, I think it would be good to just label on your site plan where your refuse containers will be. But that can also be a condition of approval.
Okay.
So just to take a step back, one of the other minor conditions that we had was, as Sarah just said, that there's not gonna be any blueprint. We just asked if that needs to be put on there. That's a note on the plan.
Okay, yeah. Those can be an addition to this, or did you put that on here?
No, it's in Larry's memo, so it's incorporated automatically.
Yeah.
So again, we prepared a draft resolution for your consideration. Okay, well first, can I, is there any comments from the public?
For the hot stuff coffee?
Are you gonna serve vegan baked goods?
Maybe if there's a demand for them, there's a demand.
Get them prepackaged.
Yes.
Yeah, the longest package, and we're not making a good name. Ezra, do you have a comment, questions?
No, good.
Trish? No, Joe?
No.
Esther?
I'm, I'm not singling y'all out, but I do have a procedural question. At what point, like, does the planning board have the ability to ask for a traffic impact study? Like, if the change of use is such that it will, like, increase the, presumably increase the traffic in a particular area, how does that work?
Yes, you do, as part of your review of something.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Is that something as the planner you think would be appropriate in this case?
I don't, based on, that is something that we would weigh in for you and would be one of our comments, because we do have traffic engineers, and that's something we're reviewing for the village. But in this case, we don't think that this is gonna generate, I hope you generate a lot of traffic.
Also, we've been in business for five years there, and we met with brides, maybe in our office for hours, and this is a quick grab and go. I would hope they're not utilizing the parking lot for chunks of time.
Sure, well, because that's a very heavily used street.
Oh, yeah.
Street is like a
And we're next to the dentist.
Yeah, yeah.
Adriano, and Hebe, and, yeah, we're Samchin too.
The way, the way that we look at it is there is the ITE directory, which gives us traffic generation numbers.
Okay.
They're nationwide numbers
Okay.
of what uses usually produce, and this is not anywhere near something that would trigger a traffic study.
Okay, cool. So that's something that you look at for all of the proposals?
Everything.
That's really neat. Thank you.
Because traffic. Yeah. We just have to have, stop having accidents on eighty-four.
Eighty-four, that's
Yeah. I don't know, it doesn't, it's not any faster going through Fishkill.
So we have no more questions from the public? I will ask for a motion to close the meeting, the public hearing, I mean, sorry.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Just a procedural question. So our discussion is part of the public hearing as well, or is the public hearing for the public?
We can, but we, we we can still discuss.
Okay, okay, great.
Okay. Do we have any comments? Do you wanna make some comments?
No, I did, no, no, I just, okay. Hans, I think, did he do it in the same way? Maybe it was slightly different.
I'm sorry, what?
Did he open the, I felt like the order was a little different with him, that's why I was
It might, it could be.
Got it.
I'm like, we, but we can discuss if we have a question.
Yeah, the board can ask questions at any point. You don't have to wait for
Oh, great, yeah.
Okay.
Because the public part of the meeting is definitely
That does, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay.
So now we have a resolution.
Yep.
Through the resolution. Whereas the board has received application for site plan approval for the change in use of an existing graphics design shop to a coffee shop on the parcel located at eight Church Street. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action with no further processing under SECPRA. And whereas on October seventeenth, the planning board held a public hearing to elicit public input. Whereas the application was referred to Dutchess County Planning, and correspondence was received on October ninth. Whereas in accordance with Section one seventy-one eighty-nine of the Village zoning law, existing land uses and structures in the VCDD District between Church and Jackson Street shall not be subject to parking and loading requirements. Whereas the planning board is familiar with the site and its vicinity and has reviewed the subject application. And whereas the planning board has given due consideration to the application materials and comments provided to them by the public and the consultants. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval to the project based on the following conditions: prior to the signing of the site plans by the chairman, the applicant shall note the refuse storage area on the site plan. Compliance with the comments in the Village Engineers Memorandum dated October seventeenth, and then payment of all fees to the village. The general conditions, just like last time, are the same ones, the standard ones that always go in there, about the expiration and the inspection.
Need a motion to accept the resolution?
I make a motion to accept the resolution pending amendments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Done with you guys, you guys.
I know, I know, we got, we got more.
The sign, oh, here it is. We have a sign approval now. All right.
It's a black and white sign that's there already, right?
Yeah, we're about to reface it.
Change in the name.
Yep.
Debbie's doing it.
And I have samples of, oh, the perfect shade of black.
Yes, that kind of sample, not other samples. We need to clarify color sample.
Yes, color samples of the sign. Dave, how's, how's, how's it doing?
It's fine.
Okay.
The, 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 the existing sign looks just like that, so it's just really a reface of those, those dimensions.
If we go for ha-ha's. Black and white, nice.
They're different black?
No.
All right. Okay. Do you have, do you have the samples?
I do.
You, you need one? You're gonna need one for the record.
Nobody, they're all right. You're all right? Are you watching?
Okay.
Black sticker.
Do you have any comments, Esther? Questions?
Thank you.
Trish, no?
Comments, question?
No, Joe?
Oh.
Esther?
Just something that jumped out to me is that if you look at the second half of the, the sign, it says stuff shop, which is maybe fine, but I kinda looked at that like, oh, stuff shop, that's a little stuff, that's just like my commentary. Not a planning note, but
Coffee hot, stuff shop, yeah.
Cool. It keeps the big study different.
Okay. Thank you.
Want to keep it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah. Okay, if anyone, if no one has any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. Is that everything?
No. No.
Yep.
Yeah. Hopefully before the new year.
Yes.
There you go.
Hopefully the village Have you all in for a cup of coffee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Back to the law.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I look buzzing along here.
Yeah.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is Crystal Bliss Spa, another public hearing.
Hello again, everybody.
Hello.
Okay, state your name for the record, please.
Dana Loachberg, architect for the establishment.
Okay. Larry?
Oh, I was gonna say, I can go first.
Okay, you, I didn't
Go ahead.
Our previous comments had been addressed. We had confirmed the parking analysis, that there is adequate parking, and then we had just asked for the chairman's signature block on the site plan.
Okay.
So our prior comment, there was only one comment that, oh, actually it was that we deferred to, you guys, to the site plan. The second one was, we talked about it last time you were here, that, that cross, providing the cross connection being addressed. Again, we would have no problem with that being addressed as
As a condition, okay. Okay. Does your question, comments?
No.
Trish? No? Joe? Esther?
Oh, come on.
I'm going to
I know you have some
I do, but it's not all right, I'll ask, but it's not specific to you.
It is.
Is there any sort of, like, standardization of the parking studies that we ask for?
Very good question.
So what we're doing is, it's something that we've kind of set a precedent with, with the board. With the existing shopping centers, they really only have a finite amount of parking. So we look at what the previous use was, what the proposed use is, and how many spaces are required, and what we've been doing is having applicants go out and count spaces for a week, or the number of days in the week. And at peak times for business, you know, in the afternoon, or if it was a restaurant in the evening. And we're having them count how many physical spaces are empty at that time, so we can determine, because that's our best guess at, if there's adequate parking.
How much is the development actually short, based on the square footage? I'm just curious.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Non-conforming, right?
It's non-conforming.
But we don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you. And applicants get to decide what a peak time is?
They could, they ask us in some occasions what it is, but we're reviewing that, and if we don't think that the peak time is adequate, they're going to hear from us about that.
Great.
We tried, I mean, we kind of, we did a weekend
Yeah, it's something that's gonna do it.
I'm not getting you out, but that's
No, no, it's fine, just saying, like, it seemed like weekend at noon time was kind of busy, and
Yeah.
nobody shops during the week, kind of things, or a few people, you know.
I'm going to ask the motion to start the public hearing.
Motion to start the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The public, we'd like to hear from you. Questions?
Only baked goods, that's the only
That's the only thing that
Tell me what?
Baked goods are
Only baked goods.
No, okay.
I'm not here to actually bake cookies.
There a specific time limit I have to wait?
No, I, I think you're good. Going once, going
Going twice, okay. Can I have a motion to close the meeting? The public hearing, sorry.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing has been closed. Anybody else have any comments or questions on the board?
No.
All right, SAS?
Thank you, everybody.
My niece's name is Sarah, we baller sex.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Try the rest of it.
We're not done.
Yeah.
You gotta give
Oh, yeah, sorry.
My time.
Yes.
Whereas the Village of Fishkill Planning Board has received application for site plan approval for spa services at the property located at nine eighty-two Main Street. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and whereas on October seventeenth, the Village of Fishkill Planning Board held a public hearing. Whereas the application was referred to Dutchess County Planning, who replied with its correspondence on October ninth, and recommended that the board rely upon its own study of the facts to make a decision. Whereas the board is familiar with the site and has reviewed the subject application in context of the development regulations. Whereas as part of other site plan applications for tenant space change in use within a shopping plaza with pre-existing non-conforming parking, the planning board has made a determination regarding required parking subject to Section one seventy-one ninety-seven B. A parking analysis of the existing parking was prepared by the applicant to demonstrate that there was adequate parking available at anticipated peak times of business. Whereas the planning board has determined that the parking analysis of the existing site, that there is adequate available parking at peak times. Whereas the planning board has reviewed and given due consideration to the application materials and the comments made by the consultants. Now therefore be it resolved the planning board hereby grants site plan approval, subject to the following conditions: Prior to the chairman's signature, compliance with the Village Engineers Memorandum dated October seventeenth, and payment of all consultation fees and fees to the village. Part two, the general conditions, same as the other two, are the three standard conditions about expiration dates and inspections.
Thank, thank you. Why the motion to accept the resolution?
Motion approved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. No sign for you yet, right?
No, that'll be next.
Okay. When you plan on open, well, not for a bit.
I won't, I'll miss you by the end of the year, but
Oh.
Sign agents
Because we are
There's a complete process.
Typically are not meeting in November and December, so we won't be meeting until January.
Okay, so sign is in January.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Canoon, are they here? Nope. All right. Anybody have anything they need to bring to the board?
Why don't we meet in November or December?
Holidays typically, and there's really not a lot.
Nothing, nothing in the pipeline.
Yeah, so we would normally have projects, we would know about them now, because they'd have to get their paperwork in pretty soon, sorry.
We have met.
We have, we have something urgent is on the agenda. We have met, but we don't, we don't know.
And, yes, so that means our next meeting won't be until January.
Trish, that might be a record.
Two months?
Don't know, how, how quickly we got
Oh.
Through here.
Well, hey.
Got many projects.
I'm efficient.
Yeah. Give him, Hans, a run for a money.
Well, let him know that.
Yes.
Get a toll report.
Yeah.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Anthony Ruggiero, so I'm your Village Trustee. I apologize I was late, not only the traffic on eighty-four, but then someone decided to take a nap in the middle of Route nine.
Oh.
So
Well, welcome.
Comedy of errors today. So I'm, I'm your trustee. I did, I apologize I missed the last meeting. I did listen to, watch the meeting, and I passed on your comments about traffic. I think it was traffic and stop signs on Broad Street, and I know they're doing enforcement.
Lack of stopping at stop signs.
They're not stopping, yes, but I know we've, so we brought that up to the chief, and so I know they're doing enforcement there, and a couple of the faces in the village. They're not stopping, yes, but I know we've, uh, so we brought that up to the chief, and, uh, so I know they're doing enforcement there and a couple other places in the village.
Do we get revenue from parking or, and traffic tickets?
I believe we do.
I'll sit out there.
Village has jurisdiction over fifty-two, right, or they have to wait, they have to pass that over to the state?
Think they have to pass that to the state.
People running red lights by CBS.
But it comes in here, same thing with Route nine, but then there's a percent that goes to the village and the state, I forget the.
No, but I'm saying like for an enforcement standpoint, like, because people run that red light by CBS all the time, like, all the time.
All the time, my gosh.
You gotta waste, you gotta look both ways and turn to green if you're pulling out of logic.
So, right.
Good to know, yeah.
I played an attorney and a cop on TV, right, so, um, you can, right, depending on the situation, an officer can enforce other jurisdictions.
You can definitely enforce running a red light.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, you would, I, I, I'm not really, you know. I see him parked there.
Good to see you.
Always good to see everybody, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, anybody have anything else? If not, then I will accept the motion to close the meeting. Second. Second, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone have happy holidays. Yes.
We're rushing out of here to get it.
No, I know, right?